Good evening, being 7:00 PM, I'll call to the McHenry County Board Regular Meeting of August 19th, 2025, and Mr. Kunkel will lead us in the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our invocation this evening, we have Pastor Zach Baer from Living Waters Lutheran Church in Crystal Lake. Welcome.
Thank you. Let us pray. Good and gracious God, on this beautiful summer night, we start as we should by giving thanks. Thank you for these elected leaders who suaver, serve our community diligently. Thank you for empowering their leadership in our community. Thank you for this wonderful county that we all call home, and in Thanksgiving, we all offer dreams of what an even greater future could look like. Thank you for giving everyone in this room the foundational gifts, passion, and purpose for their work here on the county board. We pray that our representative leader's work here tonight is impactful, so we ask you, God, the source of all wisdom and compassion, to guide this board meeting tonight, so that what is decided here may best serve the people of McHenry County, instill in our elected leaders a sense of justice and mercy. May the deliberations in this gathering be civil, full of wisdom, integrity, creativity, and the courage to make bold decisions. Please, God, help us to keep at the forefront of our minds the most vulnerable in our community. Assist this board and our leaders in being good stewards of what they've been entrusted with. May they use this abundance to aid all of our community, including the marginalized, the oppressed, and the voices that may not always be heard in the halls of power. May there be empathy to understand their challenges and the will to create a more inclusive and equitable community for all. We pray for an approach to the task on tonight's agenda that is marked by open minds, collaborative spirits, and a commitment to the common good. May the collective efforts reflect the diverse needs and aspirations of all who call McHenry County home, ensuring that no one is left behind. We offer all this up to you, God Almighty. Amen.
Mr. Terrio, will you call the roll, please? Althoff.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gattamaller.
Here.
Greeno.
Here.
Hendricks.
Here.
Kaminski.
Present and count of four.
Kearns.
Here.
Krieger.
Here.
Kunkel.
Here.
Sager.
Here.
Shorten.
Here.
Scala.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Van Hoff.
Present.
Von Bergen. Here. Having a quorum, I'll entertain a motion to allow Dr. Sager to attend remotely. Ms. Althoff makes the motion, Mr. Collins seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Smith seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Aye.
Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings. Mr. Gattamaller makes the motion, Mr. Collins seconds. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Aye.
Good evening, I have several items to report to the county board before we move on to tonight's agenda. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the severe thunderstorms that ripped through McHenry County on Saturday, particularly in the Cary and Fox River Grove area. Unfortunately, while there were a lot of downed trees and property damage, no one was seriously injured. As always, thank you to David Christensen and the staff and volunteers of the McHenry County Emergency Management Agency for their rapid response to offer assistance and coordinate relief efforts. In a few minutes after members' comments, we have a proclamation honoring the EMA by recognizing National Emergency Management Awareness Month. Our EMA has shown this weekend and time and time again before why they are deserving of this recognition. Thank you to CFO Carrie Wise for the great three-year budget forecast that she presented at last Thursday's Committee of the Whole Meeting, a presentation that Carrie and her staff completed early in order to better prepare the county board ahead for our special budget meeting on September 25th. We have our work cut out for us as we develop the fiscal year 2026 budget, but I am confident that our organization is up to the task. County Administration and Finance will be reviewing opportunities to close the budget gap that currently exists, and if you have ideas, please share them with Carrie and County Administrator Peter Austin. And while I'm on the topic, a topic, I also want to thank Finance and Audit Committee Chair Mike Scala for his hard work and his leadership as we develop the budget. I'll also soon be sitting down with new Marengo Mayor Michael Profit to discuss the city's progress on extending water and sewer service to the I-90 and Route 23 interchange, as well as marketing its location to employers. I'll be joined at this meeting by Pete, Deputy County Administrator Scott Hartman, and McHenry County Economic Development Corporation Executive Director Mark Picos. On a final note, circling back to the weather, I'd like to thank everyone who joined me Saturday morning before the bad weather blew through for a hot and humid hike with Mike across Lyons Prairie and Marsh. September's hike with Mike will take place from 10:00 to 11:30 AM Saturday, September 27th, at the North Branch Conservation Area in Richmond. The event, as always, is free, and you can register through the events calendar on the McHenry County Conservation District's website at mccdistrict.org. And that concludes my report. Do any members have comments tonight? Ms. Greeno?
Thank you. As a member of the McHenry County Board, I want to address a recent article published on August 7th, 2025, in the sham media Northwest Herald, titled "Financial Uncertainty Looms Over McHenry County As It Plans How Much To Tax And Spend." While I appreciate the newspaper's effort to inform the public about our county's budget process, I believe the piece paints an overly dire picture that doesn't fully align with the financial realities we're facing. Today, I'd like to set the record straight in the spirit of transparency, drawing on the verifiable facts from our county's official records. First, recapping what the article says, it describes a challenging financial landscape where expenses are projected to outpace revenues for the 2025 fiscal year, even if we impose, this is quote, "maximal allowable property tax increase of 3.4% based on the consumer price index." The piece highlights uncertainties like the expiration of federal American Rescue Plan funds by 2026 and potential cuts in federal funding due to national political shifts and the rising cost from, well, tariff impacts, I mean, where they got this. It warns of possible job cuts, program reductions, or delays in capital improvements, creating an impression of looming financial strain that could burden taxpayers and services alike. Now contrast that with the actual state of McHenry County's finances. The county is completely debt-free as of fiscal year 2024, a milestone we achieved through prudent management as confirmed in our official budget policy and celebrated in a county announcement just a day after the article's publication. We also maintain a robust reserve fund equivalent to seven and a half months of operating expenses, which far exceeds our policy's minimum target of 150 days, or about five months. This reserves acts as a safety net precisely for the kind of uncertainties the article mentions, allowing us to absorb potential shortfalls without immediate drastic measures like widespread cuts or tax hike. So why the discrepancy? The article focuses heavily on future projections or worst-case scenarios, which are part of our conservative budgeting process that we use to avoid surprises. But it omits, or downplays, our strong current position, making the situation sound more precarious than it is. There is no immediate financial crisis here. Our fundamentals are solid, supported by policies that prioritize balanced budgets without debt and careful revenue estimates. In fact, recent actions like the March 2024 sales tax referendum have shifted funding for mental health services away from property taxes, easing some of the pressures. So the broader concern is that next year is an election year for many board seats, and pushing for a larger tax levy now could set the stage for holding or even reducing it in 2026, allowing some to claim credit as fiscal heroes just before voters head to the polls. While external risks do exist, exaggerating them to justify unnecessary increases feels like political maneuvering more than sound governance. Our residents deserve more than headlines that stoke fear without full context. And I invite everyone to look at the actual county records for details and ask questions of any board member or administration personnel.
Mr. Kaminski?
It is with honor that I get to escort the greatest generation of veterans. The Honor Flight will be arriving at Mitchell Airfield on Sunday. We have the honor of escorting it back to McHenry. The Wisconsin State Police will be escorting us all the way to Highway C. Kenosha's Sheriff Department will be bringing us to the state line, where our outstanding McHenry County Sheriff's Department, Spring Grove, will be bringing us down Wilmont, through Johnsburg, they'll pick it up, 231, where McHenry will bring our honored veterans to the McHenry High School. Along that route, approximately 12-ish, 12:30, if you find yourself out in the neighborhood, please stop along the route and show your support as the bus and the motorcycles and the motorcade goes by. Show them that we in McHenry love our vets. Thank you.
Mr. Kunkel?
Excuse me, I wouldn't call it a pleasure, but we had a weather situation that made me smile over the weekend because we were, several people were out hot and heavy and working on the situation. We have an outstanding group in McHenry County, in municipalities, the tie-in the Sheriff's Department has done through the Training Center, that coordination. EMA, I had a police chief, Pat Finland, who did a fantastic job, fantastic job, over the weekend of the emergency. And he gave all credit to David Christensen and the EMA training that they had here at McHenry County. All those tie-ins, our township, the Highway Commissioner, opened up, their people were out on the roads before the limbs were done moving. It was, it was poetry in motion. Now, there are still people unhappy. I went and checked on many seniors that I check on fairly regularly in my district. I pulled up, they had no power, most of them had no power for almost two days. Some had small generators, we brought generators to some who needed them. Without fail, everyone that I drove up the drive, big smiles on their faces, just happy that someone checked on them. It was a strain on the public, it was a strain on municipalities. But McHenry County and all of our people rose to the occasion, and everyone should be thanked and heralded for the effort that they made. I just wanted to say thank you to Pat and Daniella and all the people out in District One who turned what was an absolute disaster into a minor excursion, and we're working on it still daily. Thank you.
Okay, proceed to special recognition. We have a proclamation this evening recognizing National Emergency Management Awareness Month, and Ms. Campbell will read the proclamation.
Thank you. Proclamation recognizing National Emergency Management Awareness Month. Whereas emergency management is a fundamental responsibility of local government, ensuring the protection of life, property, and the environment through coordinated efforts in mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. And whereas the McHenry County Emergency Management Agency, EMA, in partnership with municipal emergency management agencies, first responders, public health, public works, nonprofit organizations, and dedicated volunteers work diligently to safeguard the community from natural and human-caused disasters. And whereas the professionals and volunteers who support emergency management in McHenry County contribute countless hours planning for emergencies, conducting exercises, maintaining equipment, educating the public, and responding to real-world incidents. And whereas National Emergency Management Month is a time to recognize the critical role emergency management plays in the safety and resilience of our county, and to express appreciation for those who serve in this essential field. And whereas this month also serves as a call to action for all residents, businesses, schools, and organizations to take steps to be prepared for emergencies by building kits, making plans, staying informed, and getting involved. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the County Board of McHenry does hereby proclaim the month of August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month in McHenry County, Illinois, and encourages all citizens to recognize the value of local emergency management programs, support preparedness efforts, and honor the service and sacrifice of those who work to keep our communities safe. And be it further proclaimed that the county clerk is hereby authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the Director of the Emergency Management Agency and the County Administrator, dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 19th day of August, AD 2025.
Thank you. Dave and Brooke, do you want to come up? Okay, moving on to zoning petitions. Do any members have items they'd like to remove from the zoning consent agenda? Mr. Shorten?
10.a.2.
Any others? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning consent agenda, less item 10.a.2. Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mr. Gattamaller seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Technical difficulties. Okay, we're going old school. All right, so this is item 10. All right. Althoff.
Yes.
Campbell. And can we turn on all the microphones so we can, public can hear the?
We can only turn on four of them.
Oh, all right. Speak loudly, please. Collins.
Yes.
Gattamaller.
Yes.
Greeno.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Kaminski.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Kunkel.
Yes.
Sager.
Yes.
Shorten.
Yes.
Scala.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Van Hoff.
Yes.
Von Bergen.
Yes.
unanimously yes. Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 10.a.2. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Collins seconds. Mr. Shorten, do you want to say anything or no? Just vote? Okay. Campbell.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gattamaller.
Yes.
Greeno.
No.
Hendricks.
No.
Kaminski.
No.
Kearns.
No.
Krieger.
No.
Kunkel.
No.
Sager.
Yes.
Shorten.
No.
Scala.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
No.
Thomas.
No.
Van Hoff.
Yes.
Von Bergen.
Yes.
And Althoff.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, four. Nine against. It's a tie. I vote yes. Moving on to the zoning regular agenda, the petitioner has requested that item 10b1 be removed from consideration at this time. We will not be voting on this item tonight. We'll move on. Is there any public comment? Eric Counts. Just a reminder that this is your opportunity to address the board. You'll have three minutes to wish to do so, at which time the red light will come on in front of me, and if you haven't completed your comments, I would ask you to bring them to a conclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Chairman Bueller and members of the county board. I'm Eric Counts, a resident of Crystal Lake and a recent physics graduate, and someone with an interest in history both national and local. Yesterday, the 19th Amendment turned 105 years old. On Sunday, I spent some time in Woodstock Square learning about the 19th Amendment, the women who helped extend the right to vote, and what some women didn't are doing today. From seeing the suffrage flag, to hearing a reading of Sir Jerner Truce's Anti-A-Woman Speech, to learning about Rosemary Kurtz, who was elected Crystal Lake Treasurer, Illinois State Representative and District 155 Board Member, and learning about the work our deputy clerk does in running elections today, I'm glad I went. I want to share additional history with you, not just about the 19th Amendment, but on expanding the right to vote to women in general, focusing on Illinois and McHenry County. Among others, I want to thank the Illinois State Library and McHenry County Historical Society. On June 19th, 1891, women in Illinois were granted limited suffrage entitling them to vote in any election to hold school officials. On June 26th, 1913, women in Illinois were granted suffrage for presidential electors in all local offices, not specifically named in the Illinois Constitution, with Illinois becoming the first state used of the Mississippi River to grant women the right to vote for president. On May 21st, 1919, and on June 4th, 1919, all representatives and senators from Illinois voted to send the 19th Amendment for ratification to the states. On June 10th, 1919, at 10:48 AM, the Illinois Legislature ratified the 19th Amendment and became the first state to ratify the 19th Amendment. I also want to remember some people of McHenry County who helped pass these laws and this amendment. This includes all the state legislators who represented McHenry County who voted to extend suffrage to women. These are Representatives Partridge in 1891, Senator Olson, and Representative Shertif in Murnau in 1913, and Senator Swift and Representatives Graham, Shertif, and Vickers in 1919. In particular, I want to highlight Representative Shertif. Representative Shertif was a former Speaker of the Illinois House, and only McHenry County representative to ever become Speaker. His wife Elizabeth Sisson Shertif was active in both McHenry County chapters of the Anti-Slun League and Women's Christian Temperance Union, and believed women's suffrage could lead to a decrease in alcohol sales and to stable families and happier children. When the 1913 suffrage bill came up for a vote, Mrs. Shertif made sure her husband was appointed a floor leader to the bill. The local paper, the Marengo Republicans, stated, "Shertif made a speech that electrified the members and snatched the suffrage bill from failing at that critical moment." Thus, people from McHenry County weren't just active participants in advancing women's suffrage, but driving forces to make it possible. I hope this slice of history reminds us that doing the right thing, extending the right to vote, was a process, and that while those who voted for, worked for suffrage are in the history books, they're often in the pages that aren't read frequently. And I hope that in bringing this information to everyone here, we're all inspired to learn about the less remembered history all around us, and we're reminded of the long path suffrage took and exercise our right to vote as frequently as we're able to and to never take it for granted. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have appointments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments to the McHenry County Board of Health, Housing Authority, Hebron Drainage District, and Zoning Board of Appeals as of August 19th, 2025. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Kunkel seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Voting is open. If all voted who wish. Mr. Sager, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Do any committee chairs or liaisons have reports for us tonight? Ms. Greeno?
Yes, I'd like to report on the McHenry County Workforce Development Board meeting from July 16th at McHenry County Workforce Center in Woodstock. The workforce kiosks have been launched at McHenry County Library, and another is planned for the Harvard Library, expanding access to employment resources. Jeffrey Poehner presented the WEOA allocations for 2025. We did receive a slight increase in federal funding with a focus on dislocated workers, and Jake Rowan then reviewed the state supplemental grant of $51,843 allocated to support justice-involved individuals and expand outreach through the kiosk system. The apprenticeship development is a major focus with McHenry County College hosting an upcoming event and partnering with Lake County on a grant to expand local opportunities. There are several training programs that were recertified and new ones that were improved, including programs in architectural technology, radiologic technology, HVAC, and massage therapy. Please note that these training programs are targeted to high-demand occupations. As you know, the county's new strategic plan continues to prioritize support for the manufacturing sector. Finally, the board was briefed on the proposed Make Americans Skilled Again initiative from the federal government with information forthcoming regarding fund distribution. The next meeting is September 17th, 2025, at 7:30 AM at the McHenry County Workforce Center in Woodstock. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Just real quickly, we have the Local Emergency Planning Commission and the Emergency Management Agency Coordinating Council this Thursday. We begin with the LEPC at 1:30, and then 1:45 is the Coordinating Council. We will be getting a presentation on resiliency in McHenry County, and so come and hear what we have to say. Thank you.
Okay, so you know others? Do any members have items they'd like removed from the routine consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain- consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the routine consent agenda. Ms. Althoff makes the motion. Ms. Von Bergen seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish. Mr. Sager, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
You ready? Motion carries. Pete's got a report for us. He's ready.
And I'm sorry, I only have one thing to say tonight. Our own Scott Hartman has been named the chairman of the, what do we call it, the, he's been selected chairman of the Illinois City County Management Association Committee on Professional Conduct, so kind of like the ethics committee for city and county managers statewide. He's the chair, so congratulations. That's all I have.
Right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Thomas seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, have a good night.
Aye.